Well, it's seven o'clock. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Lake Mills Area School District for the month of May. The mission statement of the district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's Like verification of the notice of the meeting, please.
The meeting was posted on the LMASD website at the Lake Mills Post Office and submitted to the Lake Mills Leader.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order then. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag if you'll all stand and join me.
My pledge of allegiance? To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have roll call, please.
Brianna Beslik. Here.
Dawn Delaney. Here.
Ken Imers. Here.
Amy Litcher. Here.
Robert Tempurio.
Here. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda, are there any revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Hearing none, we have a roll call vote, please.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is one that is very, very pleasant. And that is, we are recognizing a number of our employees for milestones, the number of years that they have spent with the district and really enriched the district. And so I would ask the immediate supervisors of each of those people if they would come forward and so that we can recognize them.
My name's Jennifer Bauer. I'm the middle school principal, and I have several of these recognitions to give tonight. It's my honor to give these recognitions. My first recognition goes to Jan Vanderheiden, who has 30 years of service. Jan has been in and out of the middle school over the years, and her presence is always appreciated. The staff and I are grateful for your never-ending patience and willingness to always lend a helping hand.
And next, I'd like to recognize Lisa Radabaugh for her 25 years of experience. Always being one of the early adopters and innovators in the building was never an easy task, but Lisa always took this role seriously and pushed the staff forward in everything from effective student feedback systems to student goal setting. Her work will always be valued even in her retirement. My next recognition goes to Scott Pfeifer with 20 years of experience. A few years ago, a student with special needs was featured in the paper because of his game-winning basketball shot at our March Madness Assembly, and students orchestrated all of this for the student's success. And besides his contagious positivity enthusiasm, Scott has always made sports accessible to everyone and made it our culture to encourage others, whatever their capabilities, in both his FIAD work and in coaching. So, thank you, Scott. This is truly the center of your work, and we really appreciate everything you've done. And I have to be a little funny because the next person I'm going to invite up here is Mark O'Brien after 25 years of service. Neither Mark nor Scott look like they've been teaching for as long as they have. Maybe it's their walks or their lunches that keep them so youthful. We actually have Chris Page has also got years of experience, 25 years of experience, but he's not here tonight. So I've got Chris working with power tools with middle school kids. I've got Scott out there with middle school kids throwing basketballs everywhere. And I've got Mark in the middle school lab, science lab with sixth graders doing science experiments. So it truly takes a special person to fill all of these shoes, and Mark is no exception. So from students learning the importance of lab safety and careful report writing to crazy antics during March Madness basketball, Mark has truly excelled in the special meaning of being a middle school teacher.
Hi, my name is Kale Vogel. I'm the high school principal. I have two people to recognize. But first, I do want to say that my oldest son has been through middle school, and some of his favorite teachers were the three or four teachers that were recognized right now. So it shows that I think our staff, whether they're a new teacher, middle teacher, at the end of the road, you know, we have a fantastic staff here at Lake Mills. So congratulations. First person I want to recognize is Mr. Jason Quinn for 20 years of service. And what I can say about Jason is that he is a, I think, kind of the bedrock of our social studies department. He was a peer of mine when I was a teacher here in Lake Mills back from 2006 to 2012. Interesting fact, I graduated high school with Jason, so I've known Jason quite a long time. And if you remember Doug Fritsch, he, student taught with Doug for a year and then went to Chippewa Falls and has been at Lake Mills ever since. So I guess the greatest compliment that I can give Jason is that I can't wait for my kids to be in his classes. So Jason Quinn. Next up, Ms. Diane Sweeney, one of our school counselors. And for a long time, I don't know how many years, but for a long time, our only school counselor at the high school. 30 years, 1990, 1991 was her first year, and she actually taught French at the high school for eight to nine years, I believe. I don't like talking, you guys are all in back of me, but... Got into school counseling, worked with Eric Leadholm, if some of you remember Eric from back in the day. Diane, she had a lot of roles and responsibilities as the only school counselor for such a long time and did a fantastic, fantastic job. Diane is definitely a confidant of mine, someone that I wish they would be around for a long, long time, but she has paid her dues, and she's very committed to the students at Lake Mills, and I'm going to miss her very much. I have to say, my greatest compliment for Diane is that I wish my kids were able to have chats with her and, you know, maybe, not in a school setting, but maybe in a sports setting someday. So 30 years in, Ms. Sweeney.
I'm the Director of Special Education and Pupil Services. I have two staff members to honor tonight. The first is Mary Smith. She's been with us for 25 years. She is a special education paraprofessional. She started off part-time at the middle school, in the library, and doing study hall and the dreaded lunch duty. And she also spent about five or six years as the subcaller in between there, and then moved to the high school to support an individual student and has been there ever since. She really loves the aha moments that she has with her students. She's learning right along with them. It's fun and challenging, but it is very rewarding, and we are very lucky to have her with us. The next I have is Rachel Eckert. She has been with us for 20 years, primarily all at the middle school. For five years, at first at the middle school as a special ed paraprofessional, and then she moved to the elementary school for five years, and then back the last 10 years at the middle school. And just, she was able to finish up her teaching degree and just this past year started teaching for us. She is very grateful for the opportunities that has allowed her to continue her education here and the sense of community within the district that has allowed her to balance her family and career. So we are also very lucky to have her.
Hello, I'm Rod Hutchins, the Director of Facilities for the School District, and I'm here to recognize Steve Barlow. Steve Barlow has been in the district for 20 years. He is the oldest tenured employee in the Building and Grounds Department, and he's done a marvelous job helping us keep, maintain our buildings, and also particularly this year with COVID, doing his part to disinfect and sanitize our buildings so that we could stay open throughout the crisis. I'd like to bring Steve up here.
Hi, I'm Wendy Brockert, and it's my honor to recognize Chris Rumery. Chris Rumery is actually in her 41st year, so she did complete 40 years this past year. She's driven, she's one of our bus drivers, and she's driven the same route for her bus-driving career with our district. So can you imagine driving the same roads for 40, 41 years this year? With her continuity, she has gotten to know our families well and has driven in some instances second generations, which you can guess. Chris also has drove for our athletic program and field trips. So because of these additional trips, Chris has learned a lot about Wisconsin, and she has traveled all over the state, especially due to athletics. Chris has had many enjoyable years and has met a lot of people, be it parents from the students on her route, or athletic parents, or field trip parents. Watching the parents interact with the students and each other has been entertaining. Chris has appreciated the parent's support and has really enjoyed her children. When you drive a student for the student's school career, you really get to know that student well. The district appreciates her dedication and positive interactions with our students. Chris also shared with me how thankful she is to the district for allowing her to work for us for so many years. It's been rewarding. So wow, 40 years, congratulations, Chris.
I'll make Wendy stay up here since she's next. I have the pleasure of recognizing Wendy for her 25 years of service to the district, and Wendy is also retiring this year, unfortunately for all of us. The first thing I heard when I was hired in the Lake Mills District was how phenomenal Wendy Brockert was as a business manager. I don't know how many people really realize this, but Wendy has quite the reputation in the state of Wisconsin among all school districts and business officials, and she's been recognized quite heavily throughout the state for that. She was the recipient of many awards and actually received the highest award that the school business officials can award a business leader in the state. She was also the president, past president, president-elect of WASBA, which is our state organization as well. I can't say enough for somebody who, year after year, 25 years, manages a $16 million budget, but Wendy manages the school district budget like it was her own checkbook. She is very, very conscientious, and I don't think you're going to find somebody more dedicated to the school district of Lake Mills than what Wendy is. And I can't say enough that I wish I had one more year at least to work with her, but I couldn't convince her to not retire. So, thank you.
Again, that's really, really quite amazing, the dedication that we have from our staff. We are very thankful for that. And I guess I would just say at this point, if any of the guests wish to leave, you certainly may. Otherwise, it's going to be a great meeting. You could stick around. So, whatever, it won't be disruptive if you choose to leave.
Kale, do you want our top 10 students to come maybe sit in the first two rows or not? Okay, so our students that we're recognizing, I don't know if you want to come up possibly to the first two rows, the ones that are standing in the back, you'll be on the agenda here in a couple of minutes.
Okay, next we have the report of correspondence. Dr. Delaney.
Yep, we received a note from Chris Rumery thanking us for a donation to Rainbow Hospice in memory of her husband.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Mendoza, the student representative on the board, you have a report.
All right. Well, this year has definitely flown by. I don't know if it's just because it's my last year, but I mean, I feel like just yesterday I was at my first meeting here in October. So I am happy to say that despite all the challenges, I think all the students really proved themselves and like proved what we're capable of. We did amazing in sports this year, did things that we've never done before. Of course, academics, we're still thriving in that category, so congrats to everyone on that. But I just feel very honored to be able to represent my class this year as well as the rest of the students because I think we definitely did and proved some amazing things despite everything. And I would also like to thank you guys for letting me speak here every month, and yeah, it's been a really great experience. So, thank you, guys.
Well, we really appreciate you being able to join us this year, and we have a little token of appreciation.
Thank you. Do I open it, or do I wait?
It's up to you. It's your gift.
I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay, now we have another very pleasant thing on the agenda. To honor student achievement, Mr. Vogel.
Tonight, we get to, we get to honor our top 10 graduates of the class of 2021 according to our class rank system. We normally do this, the conference kind of runs at the Capitol Conference, and we have a big banquet in Madison at the Sheraton, and all the 12 schools bring their top graduates in for a dinner. And it really is, it's a cool night, but sadly, we haven't had it the last two years due to COVID. So this year especially, I wanted to try to do something to recognize our top 10 graduates. They'll also be recognized on Sunday at the awards night. That's where you'll get your plaque. I do want to recognize them in front of the board and the Lake Mills High School or the Lake Mills School community. So again, on behalf of Lake Mills School community, we congratulate you and thrilled to celebrate with you this evening. So I'd like, when I announce your name, I think there's nine of you here, just kind of come up and stand and kind of look at the crowd, and I want to get a quick picture before I take them off. Our first one is Elise Evenson, and I don't think Elise is with us tonight. I believe she has a softball game, correct? Next up, we have Peyton Hands. And Kayla Will. I want to let Megan get that picture for me.
And I think I would make the same offer to our honorees and their guests. If you choose to stay, that's great. If not, we'll wait a couple of moments. Well, at this point on the agenda is a time for community input, and typically there is a limitation of... Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, Kale still had on his part of the report. I didn't know if you wanted to highlight any changes in the handbook?
Sorry, I just made, I made one change to the handbook. I took out the no hat rule for next year. We kind of got rid of it this year. That was it. Otherwise, it's the same student handbook.
Okay, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening. A couple of updates from the curriculum department. Alongside of everything we've been doing this year with in-person and virtual learning, we've also been in the process of our curriculum renewal cycle. So this year, our science team has met kindergarten through 12th grade. They've met with Kevin Anderson from DPI to look at our new, the new Wisconsin standards for science. The high school department is revising their scope and sequence, and that will be published on our website this summer. Our middle school teachers are adopting Inspire Science as their new curriculum starting next year, so we'll be implementing that. With Dawn Halbachan is the professional, the staff developer, who will be working with us in that implementation. Our kindergarten through 4th grade teachers are going to be developing a new scope and sequence using some of the materials and the curriculum resources that we currently have, and then enhancing it with Amplify Science with more hands-on materials. So the science team has been very busy all of last summer and this school year getting that work together. Our art team has also been working together. They worked with Julie Polkowski from DPI to look at the new updated Wisconsin art standards this summer, and then they had a self-paced professional development course through the Art of Education, and they are also updating their scope and sequence, and that will be on our website this summer. Our social and emotional learning group has been meeting this school year. So we've met with, Mrs. Brown and I have met with our high school department, the middle school department, and the elementary. So there's representatives from our core teaching team along with our school counselors. And we looked at our, the Wisconsin Social and Emotional Learning Competency Crosswalk with, which is also aligned with our Information and Technology Literacy Standards, to determine where we're already teaching some of those competencies within our curriculum and where our gaps are. So this summer, those teams will be coming together to develop curriculum to meet the, to address any of the gaps in the standards, to be able to enhance the social and emotional learning curriculum that we provide for our students. English Language Arts is another area that we spent some time working on this year. Jenny Nichols is our district reading specialist, our literacy coach. She worked with all three buildings, looking at the updated ELA standards for Wisconsin. The most of the changes were at the primary grade levels, looking at the science of phonics, science of reading and enhanced phonics instruction, and then also looking at equity across all of the grade levels, making sure that our curriculum and the materials in the books that our students are reading represent them and other individuals all throughout the world. And then next year, we're going to be focusing on math and social studies alongside of continuing the work of science, social and emotional learning, and our ELA curriculum. And then the final thing that we'll be working on next year for 6th through 12th grade is working with Katherine McKnight on disciplinary literacy in the content areas. She'll be visiting with us at the start of the school year and then mid-year to help all of our teachers in those grade levels be able to infuse reading and writing in the content areas. And in between visits, Jenny Nichols will be working with those departments to keep the learning growing between visits and across the school year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Grundall, an update on summer school.
Quick update on summer school. We finished up our registration on April 15th. So right now, we're going through our staffing, collecting fees for those FEED classes. We're also working with food services during our first session. There's going to be free lunches and breakfasts provided to all students that are taking summer school, so we're orchestrating that and with Kathy. We're also working on transportation, on busing, so when students do come to summer school, busing them in between the different places that we're going to go, up to the high school for gymnastics, to the bowling alley for bowling, and working on those schedules. We have two great programs that we are introducing this year is our Camp Invention Program, which is our STEM program. We have 62 students signed up for that. That's K through 5, so a great number there. We're going to be able to run four different modules for the students in the Camp Invention Program. That's a nationally renowned program. And also, we have for our literacy and math programming this summer, we're connecting with Bell Excel with Scholastic to provide materials, and we got a grant from the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation to cover all of our expenses for that program. So it's a nice donation from them for the grant foundation. Part of the Bell Excel program, we have a screener for students, and then we have all the materials for them as they progress through the summer school session. There's a social, emotional learning component for all our teachers that we're going to train for summer school. There's a family connection, and there's surveys all part of that programming that we're going to do this summer. So excited about those two big programs coming out this summer. And we start up June 14th with our first session, so any questions? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brockert.
I have just a couple of things I want to highlight. One is, right now, we're in the midst of open enrollment for our employee benefits that goes through the 19th, and staff have been really appreciative of the new addition of our voluntary short-term disability plans and some additional life insurance options. So that documentation is well underway. The second thing I want to highlight is our technology department. Each year, Chris Zerniak, the network director, and I work on obtaining some additional federal funding through the E-Rate program, and we just found out that all our requests have been approved, which we appreciate. The projects that we submit are funded at 60%, and so we're going to be doing some rewiring at the high school under that program, as well as some other annual things that we do, like our internet service and stuff like that. The last thing I want to highlight, and Nate already did a little bit of talk about it, is with our food service program. We're happy to say that the federal government is extending the SSO program, which stands for Seamless Summer Option, into next school year. So again, during the 2021-22 school year, we'll be able to provide free meals for all of our students. That's breakfast and lunch. And this program, you know, provided that for our students this year. And we're also able to do it for the first session of summer school, as Nate said. So we really appreciate our food service staff. And last Friday, hopefully you saw some of the social media that was posted, but was, it was School Lunch Hero Day, and I attached the proclamation. And this year, our food service staff have gone above and beyond, just like most of our other staff too, but I just, it was really nice to be able to recognize them because they've, they've been there, you know, making sure our students have meals and just gone above and beyond in all kinds of situations. So we really appreciate them. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Olson.
I get to talk about open enrollment in a different fashion, so the open enrollment... So the open enrollment window closed last week in the state of Wisconsin, and I attached a grid there. Roseanne helped put that together. And you can see on the lower end of that grid in our 4K, 5K programs that not only do we have a number of open enrollment in applications, but it's also the grade levels where we're seeing a lot of new move-ins into the district. So we're really starting to burst at the seams at that 4K in kindergarten area. In fact, we're looking at adding possibly another teacher on that lower end and expanding to a possible sixth section if that continues to grow. So it's a good problem to have. You never want to be on the side of decreasing enrollment in a district because that is where we get our revenue to operate. So we will keep tabs on these numbers. Right now, you'll see it looks lower in 4K, but that's always typical. It's actually high for this time of the year. A lot of times, parents of 4K students don't really start registering until, it seems like, the second week of August, the floodgates open, and then we get a lot of new enrollees. But we'll be watching the actual move-in enrollment, and then you will make a decision on which open enrollment applications to accept, since we put limits on the different grade levels for that. So also, we have a rec department update. Honestly, this has been the first month where I've actually been able to see our rec department in full action. It was a little slower in the fall because we had a lot of restrictions, and it gave me a new appreciation for what our rec folks do because they're just doing so many diverse things. So whether I got to watch bingo with our Club 55 group, that's really starting to gear up. I know Jane's getting ready for a lot of outdoor activities. She was talking to me about the kayaks and getting ready to get back out on the lake. And then I actually enrolled my grandson in rec soccer over here, so I've been over here every Saturday, and I am amazed at the job our rec department does with the hundreds of kids that it feels like are up in that field and just enjoying themselves and playing soccer. So we just have seen a myriad of activities, and like I said, it just gave me a new appreciation for the opportunities that we have in Lake Mills for not only our kids, but also our adults in the city. So kudos to them. And an update on the pandemic plan. I know everybody's anxious to speak here again. Just, I guess, the one thing I want to go into is we're not saying that we're never going to change the pandemic plan. I know as things loosen up, we definitely are looking at phasing into being less restrictive in the school district. Just know that there are legal things that we have to consider, and not only with the legal things, that there are things with liability insurance and carriers and things like that that we also have to consider. So we did receive a legal update. All the superintendents in the state received a legal update about face masks last Friday. They just warned again about negligence and possible lawsuits and claims that could be filed against you and possibly having your insurance carrier drop you if you totally disregarded the Health Department or CDC guidelines. So it's just something that I'll take into consideration, just for the audience as well. Please know that we do watch all of the stories around the state. We are seeing things loosen up, especially in the northern parts of the state, and watching what Waukesha County is doing. And we'll be having another discussion with the Health Department this week. So I've been emailing him, and we're hoping then to phase out some of our restrictions. I know those of you that emailed me, we wanted to stay firm till the end of the school year, but we are examining summer school to look at what the requirements would be, if there are any requirements for summer school. It's a little too early to really say for sure about the fall. Learned our lesson last summer, where I never in a million years thought would be requiring face masks last July. In fact, I think I told a few of you that. And then we really couldn't predict what was coming down the pike here with things. But we're hopeful, things are looking better in the district, less positive cases. Hopefully, we keep moving in that direction because I know we're all fatigued with having to wear face masks, adults and kids alike. So we would really like to get rid of them as well, too. So with that, that is my update.
Thank you. And the community input, as I started to mention incorrectly, that there is an allotment of time that we put aside for 15 minutes. And in the interest of hearing everyone who wishes to speak, I would propose that we suspend our rules to allow a longer period of time, but I would ask that each person speaking would limit themselves to two minutes. We have 18 people, I think, who have registered to speak.
Now we're up to 19.
So with that, I think that we can make sure that everyone is heard. And so do we have a list of people?
Yes, we'll just ask that you come up to the microphone so that you are able to be heard. And, oh, and I'm going to butcher last names. I'm sorry. So Tammy, you are first on the list.
Thanks. Thank you. My name is Tammy Hayjack. I live at 262 Brewster Drive. Today, I speak not just for myself and my family, but also for a large number of parents in this school district. The vast majority of parents and students, as you and I both know, have returned to their usual unmasked lives. The majority of them are participating in or organizing playdates, sleepovers, or celebrations. The school pandemic plan reads, "As the spread of COVID-19 decreases, the face covering requirement will be evaluated." The Supreme Court has already ruled on this as illegal. You can see from the Jefferson County data that I gave, that the active COVID infections have declined substantially since January. We are no longer in a pandemic. This is not spring 2020. There are three vaccines, and anyone who wants one can get one. This plan needs to be changed tonight. What basis is there to continue the mask requirement now that the Supreme Court ruled as void? As you know, kids are not the most sanitary and are wearing masks each day without being washed. I've seen it with my own kids and her friends. Masks are removed at the end of the day, tossed on the floor of their rooms, stuffed in backpacks and so on, only to be put back on the next day. Bacteria, mold spores grow, and a child can develop a fungal infection of the lungs, throat, or mouth. Will you take responsibility for their illness when this happens? Many say, "Trust the science, we're following CDC guidelines." But we didn't vote for the people at the CDC. We voted for you to make these decisions in the best interest of our kids, and masks are not in the best interest. Decisions have been made in the absence of evidence, which may be detrimental to a child's physical, mental, developmental health and learning and education. If you truly care about children, you will end this. I'm just about done. Will you call a special executive session tonight to remove these masks? Our kids have complied with these rules all year long despite the struggles that they face. As parents, we have taught our kids to respect authority, which is what our children have done. But when does your authority overstep and infringe on their health and their freedom? As parents yourselves, wouldn't you agree that you are the only one who should make medical decisions for your children? We, the parents and taxpayers of Lake Mills School District, are demanding you make masks optional effective immediately.
All right, number two is Angie Zilox. Angie, are you here tonight? Okay, we'll go on to number three, Joel Kirchberg.
I was hoping to go last, but here I am. Okay, so first of all, I would like to thank the board, the Lake Mills administration for being brave enough to have the option of in-person schooling this year. Thank you very much. Also, a special thanks to the principals of the schools, who I'm sure have had more than their usual workload this year. So thank you to the principals. Thank you. Also, a special thank you to Mrs. Thompson. As I understand, she's no longer going to be the elementary school principal, and I think a lot of us really appreciate her as well. So thank you, Mrs. Thompson. So quickly, I'm here to ask for the school board also to immediately remove the mask mandate for our kids in school. While masking and other mitigation efforts may seem reasonable on its surface, we must look closely at the data that does not support the prevention and transmission of COVID using mask efforts. I have shared with the school board many studies regarding these concerns over the year, and I've shared several tonight as well, including Dr. Mihang's discussion why wearing masks make healthy people sick. Dr. Mihang provides a very comprehensive discussion regarding the evidence-based analysis of why masks are not only ineffective, but unnecessary and harmful. My additional submission is authored by Dr. Rancourt. Dr. Rancourt provides many peer-reviewed randomized controlled studies of the ineffectiveness of masks relevant to COVID-19. But there's a few other thoughts I'd like you to think about. Number one, what are the minimum specifications of a mask? To me, I could take my child's sock, put it over my face, and that'd be okay to prevent COVID-19. That doesn't make any sense. Stopping a virus with anything but an N95 mask is like trying to stop mosquitoes with a chain-linked fence. However, it does do a good job of keeping bacteria inside your mask, so it's like a Petri dish. At home, we did a fun experiment in January. We actually bought some cultures, and we took those cotton swabs. I'm sure many of you have done this before at home or in school. And you actually did a culture, like I took my son's armpit, we took the dog's tongue, a mask, the toilet handle, and guess what was number one? The mask. It was disgusting, okay? Surprisingly, the dog tongue was the cleanest. It was beyond me. So I have a lot of other information I'd like to share, but I'm going to respect the board's time, and I'm sure there's a lot of other people I'd like to speak to tonight, but please, please consider getting these masks off our children. Thank you.
Next up is Mary Klein. Mary Klein?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Can you tell me if this sounds abusive? My friend's husband won't let her visit any family or friends. He has made her stop all contact with them unless it's on the phone or computer. He makes her feel like she's going crazy for thinking he's controlling and that she's being ungrateful. After all, he's only doing this because of how much he cares about her. He doesn't want her to go to the gym anymore, so she doesn't go. He also doesn't let her go to work anymore. He told her to only rely on him for income and that he will take care of her. She's not really allowed to go out anymore unless it's for necessities, and when she does, he makes sure to have people guilt trip her about it and shame her for it. He wants her to have this medical procedure done and tells her that if she does it, he will allow her more freedoms. He constantly says he's only doing all of this because he cares. He is just doing it for her own good. Oh, wait, did I say her husband? I meant the government. My bad. You have been conditioned to be outraged if another person did this to their spouse, but be passive and compliant when it comes to our government. Please wake up. In the beginning of November 2020, my children got exposed to someone with COVID and had to quarantine for two weeks. My son, who is in the second grade, had at least three breakdowns during this time, crying and stating that he missed his friends and teachers. He loved school and was devastated that he had to miss out on being with his friends. To this day, he still asks, "Why do we have to wear the masks and when he can stop wearing them to school?" What am I supposed to say to him? Tell me this is not messing with these kids' mental health. Now go to Thanksgiving Day 2020. We were just about to leave to go to Thanksgiving at a family member's house when we received an automated email and a call that my daughter, who's in 4K, may have been exposed to a classmate with COVID. This may have been the previous Monday or Tuesday. She had to stay out of school the following week. If these masks truly do work so well and the kids basically have the masks on the whole time, why do they have to quarantine? My daughter never got symptoms or sick. Why do healthy kids need to quarantine? They take their masks off to eat a snack at school, which isn't any longer than the 15-minute requirement. When children pose zero threat to others and have a literal zero risk from infection, and you still insist on keeping them masked, are you prepared to be held personally responsible for the damages of continued mask wearing? Let our kids breathe fresh air that they need to breathe. It's been over a year since this pandemic happened. Let those of us that want to send our kids to school without masks do that, and those that still feel safe sending their children to school in masks do that. Have you tried running outside with a mask on? Can you breathe decent? I know my kids have both said they have headaches after coming home from school and having to wear a mask. My son especially, when he's in physical education and is in gym. That isn't good for their lungs. Please let these kids breathe fresh air. Thank you.
Joy Brown?
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Hi, my name is Joy Brown. I live at 149 East Grant Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and thank you for your service on the board. I'd like to ask that you remember that you are elected officials, and you took an oath and you agreed to be on this board. I've come to you today as a taxpayer and a parent that I have children that attend the Lake Mills School District. One of them has an autoimmune condition. I ask you to have an executive session tonight to make masks optional on school grounds for children, teachers, and visitors. I think it's important for you to understand the medical condition that one of my child has causes neurological symptoms such as motor and vocal tics, psychological symptoms such as rage, aggression, OCD, ADHD symptoms, anxiety, sleep disturbances, sensory issues. And when I asked him if he wanted to speak tonight, his response is, "I hate the masks, but I already have a target on my back at school, so no." So I will speak for him. I will advocate for my children. I appreciate the fact that the school, that, I'm sorry, I appreciate the fact that the people in our community now understand that you should stay home when you're ill this year. Don't know why it took a pandemic for people to understand that. I also appreciate the fact that the sick children guidelines are now being followed in our district. Forced masks, however, I cannot continue to support. Trust me when I tell you that we take our children's medical health very seriously. We pay completely out of pocket for most of his medical care, and the masks are hindering his healing process. There are zero efficacy standards for child-sized masking. You're requiring untested, unregulated apparatuses that restrict breathing, cause increased carbon dioxide, and they are Petri dish for pathogens that directly cover their nasal and oral mucosa. I'll skip my information about OSHA, since Joel already covered all of that. Here's a glimpse into some of the effects that masking has had in our home. We've had to complete another evaluation for OCD and neurological tics due to the increase in our OCD and tic symptoms in our son based on his mask, having to wear this mask. We've added two more supplements to his regime. I'm almost finished. That we also pay out of pocket for. We have purchased several different kinds of masks to avoid a sensory nightmare for him. Our children return home from school almost daily, and it takes about an hour for him to calm down and relapse because he's held in his anxiety and his tics all day long to try to be compliant. We have had increased sleep disturbances, listening to my children talking to me about how they are having to constantly be reminded to pull up their masks, and they say to me in tears, "Mom, I can't breathe." I've had to pick up one of my other children from school because she was complaining that her chest hurt so bad because she could not breathe. As a parent, I am in charge of my children's healthcare, and I'm asking for that choice as a parent, that a medical device be a parent's decision. There is no state mandate. There is no mandates in our city. There are no mandates in the county right now. I ask for an executive session again tonight to be held to remove these masks.
Is Jade here then? Okay.
Can you hear me? Hello, members of the school board. My name is Jade, and I am in fifth grade at the middle school in Lake Mills. I'm here to speak about how wearing a mask at school affects me and others mentally and physically. I will start with the ways that I have been affected and seeing that others are affected physically. This has happened to me when I do physical activities like in gym class. My muscles get really tense because the masks makes it hard to breathe, and my muscles don't get... My muscles get really tense because the masks makes it hard to breathe, and my muscles don't get the oxygen they need. One day, I was at school, and I was struggling during the day because I was having a hard time breathing, so I went to the office several times, and I'd take a break because I was struggling to breathe. And I ended up having to go home that day because it scared me, and I just wanted to be with my mom and be home where I can breathe without a mask. I also get headaches and get dizzy a few times a day wearing, a day from wearing the mask. My brother has a hard time with the masks, but it's because it makes him really tired. One time in gym class, playing basketball, he got hit in the face, and the mask got pulled off his ear, and his ear was scratched. He also gets headaches from them. My sister gets a really stuffy nose from the mask and then can't breathe, and it makes her chest hurt. Now, let's move on to how it affects me and my family mentally. It affects me like when I can't breathe. That makes me anxious. Makes, it makes me sad because I can't see people smile or any emotion from their face. I get depressed because I can't talk to my friends because we have to have masks on and have to stay six feet apart. It's hard to learn because I can't see the teacher's mouth, and then I get upset because I didn't hear what they said. My sister feels sad because she can't see people's face and if they are happy or sad. Friends at school get in trouble because they can't keep their mask on because they need a break or don't feel good with the mask on, so they really need a break. To end my speech, I would like to ask that masks become optional for kids and adults at school districts. Thank you for letting me speak, and have a good night.
Nadia, you're up next.
My name is Nadia, and I'm speaking on behalf of other students and myself to make masks optional. I struggle greatly with wearing a mask at school all day. I do not wear a mask anywhere else as I get headaches very quickly when I wear them. I was given the option to take breaks whenever I need one if I have a headache, but those don't help whenever there's a lecture in school or there's a meeting that I need to attend to, and I have a headache. It doesn't help that I'm, that I get focused, I, sorry. I can't focus well with a mask on because I get a headache, and my visions sometimes get blurry. I am bullied by teachers and students if I don't wear a mask properly over my nose, but I'm in pain when I do. Virtual schooling is also not a good option for me because poor communication with my teachers and not getting timely responses like emails or Google meets starting at the right time. It's difficult to work with, through a teacher versus email against in-person. Lack of social interaction with friends, which results in anxiety and other health conditions. I want to be in school with my friends so I can stay on task, communicate better with teachers, but I also want to breathe. Putting, put yourself in my shoes. Would you be able to concentrate all day doing your job feeling like you're suffocating? I urge you to make masks optional immediately, and I would like to finish middle school in person. Your job is to make decisions that are best for us. What is best for us is fresh air. Thank you.
Nikki Girrell?
I'm not Nikki Girrell, but I have her voice. For Pete's sake, I'm sorry.
You will by now have heard from other parents about the inefficacy of mask-wearing in schools. You will have received packets of data with proven statistics and figures that give evidence that masks do not work. You will also have heard about the Prime Minister of England, the country with the most stringent of COVID rules, who has declared no more masks in schools. My speech is not about masks per se, but about community compliance as a result of our school's rules. My healthy and energetic son was quarantined for the third time last week. He has been healthy with no symptoms each of these times. My daughter was also quarantined for 14 days, and while she stayed home fully healthy, the person who tested positive was back at school a full week before my daughter and her fellow classmates were welcomed back. Now, let's go back to pre-COVID years. When a kid got the flu, he or she was sent home to quarantine until they were 24 hours post-symptoms. No one else in the class was sent home unless they too got the flu. We are now a full year past the uncertain times where we had no data and did not know the extent of danger this virus caused. The data shows little to no spread of the virus between school-aged children or between students and their teachers. With this data and the fact that every person above the age of 16 in this country is able to have had the vaccine, why the fear? What is the reasoning behind continuing to mandate masks, especially in the face of the current statistical evidence, coupled with the easy access to the COVID-19 vaccines? My children were not able to attend their paid-for piano lessons, club, and rec sport practices and games during the time that they were quarantined. While only the rec sport falls under the school banner, the whole community takes notice of the quarantine rules of the school and follows suit. Let alone the fact that one of us now has to be home to look after and help our healthy children while they navigate virtual learning with their classmates in the classrooms. Are you prepared to refund us the fees or salary that we have lost due to this forced confinement of our healthy children? Quarantine the sick and let the rest of the class stay in session. There should be no more quarantining with the advent of the vaccine. Should any parent, or teacher, or child be in fear of the child who is sick? Let them stay home and give my child the education, including sports and other recreational activities that he or she has signed up for and that we have paid for and expect to receive. I request that you call a special executive session tonight to end all quarantines for healthy students and to end the mask mandate at schools. Thank you.
Laura Taylor?
I did my best to shorten this up, but I wrote it for three minutes, as what it was said on the board. So, I'm Laura Taylor. Because I've never heard it mentioned on this school, I wanted to speak for families like ours that were forced into virtual learning because we chose to practice health and wellness care instead of fear of becoming sick. I grew up eating fresh foods and keeping ourselves healthy by assisting our natural immune systems. It was never a challenge and always looked on as a smart thing to do until 2020. We raise our kids in much the same way. Every winter, we supplement. We're seldom sick, and I also have very sensitive, am very sensitive to chemicals and cleaning deodorizing products, so we take advantage of fresh air, and we make our own cleaning products at home. We were never afraid of this new virus, but respected the precautions put in place. By the time school started again in fall, we were confident that the natural methods would prevail against anything foreign to our bodies. Requiring children that were not in the high-risk group to completely cover the nose and mouth with a paper or cloth mask while sitting in rooms overrun with every chemical they could apply to any surface went against every health method we live by. And never was it recommended or encouraged to bump up healthy ways of supplementing our own natural defense with something as simple and proven as vitamin D. When the battle began with our son, it was, then the battle began with our son about it not being fair that he had to stay home because we didn't want him in this unhealthy school environment for eight hours a day. We finally compromised and went with the blended virtual schedule so that he could feel connected with his friends and teachers for a limited time of mask-wearing and chemical exposure each day. By the third quarter, we were all exhausted with the mandates and that were not supported by the actual data that was now available. Our son's interest in learning was waning. He was mad at me for keeping him away from his normal school routine. He hated the daily issues we had to deal with because we have extremely poor internet connections, and 90-minute classes sitting by himself with little or no interaction with his class was driving him into depression. We decided. We decided to allow him to attend fourth quarter in person because we were sure the mask mandate was over once the Supreme Court ruled against it. It's been stated that more students returned to school for the last quarter, but how many of those returning did so for the same reason we did? Because we believed the mandatory masking was over. Yet, here we are, still watching our kids go to school in masks that do not stop this virus. Why? Why won't this public school funded by our tax dollars accommodate all free citizens? We're not asking to strip the freedoms of those that want to wear a mask, so why are we, whom choose a different healthcare method, not allowed the same freedoms? Mandatory masking and quarantine of healthy people need to stop immediately. Thank you.
Ian Taylor?
Am I supposed to do something with this? No? Good? All right. So, I had a speech written today, and I was planning on sharing that with you all, but it just doesn't feel like me, so I'm choosing to do my own thing today. The school has bullied us into wearing masks the whole year. As you know, I didn't do full in-person because of the mask, and it just doesn't feel right that I have to be bullied into wearing a mask that we don't believe in, just go to a school that, like my parents pay tax, tax dollars for. So, why should I be bullied into doing stuff like that? I'm a freshman this year. I was excited to be in sports. I do soccer and basketball. Well, I do soccer. We had to wear masks so that we could play at other schools, you know? I'm sure you guys know, like Dodgers Hughes, Dodger and Huesisford. We were bullied into wearing a mask to play a soccer game outside in the fresh air. I was going to play basketball this year, but I thought wearing a mask was ridiculous. I've played inside, I've played basketball inside with a mask on, and let me tell you, it is not fun, and it is hard to play, and it is hard to breathe. So, I was bullied into wearing a mask by the school just to play basketball, a sport where it's kind of hard to play when you can't breathe. So, I didn't play basketball this year, and now I'm playing track right now. I, we are also being bullied into wearing a mask for track. For what? We get to our blocks, is the rule. We get to our blocks for the start of a race, and then what we have to do? We have to wear a mask to our blocks and then take it down to run a race. I'm not sure if you've been to a track, but the lanes are not six feet apart. Why am I being bullied into wearing a mask? That is dumb. Also, in class, we're bullied into wearing our masks. If it slips beneath my nose, whether I touch it or not, I'm within two seconds told to put it back up. Why should I be bullied into wearing a mask that, like others have said, does not work? Why do I have to be, feel bullied into wearing it? And I know that you guys also probably feel bullied into enforcing it from higher administrative authority, but like we said, we all vote for you to be on here, and we'd like for you guys to take action tonight to vote to get it off. You guys are failing us. Thank you.
Kevin Taylor?
Hi, my name's Kevin Taylor. I live at N7162 North Shore Road. I guess we're all going to be a little extremparaneous tonight because I'll read part of my son's speech that he didn't read because I thought it was pretty good. It may be a little repetitive in spots, but I'll hold it down to less than three minutes. It starts, "Ask any student if they are aware of the school bullying policy, and they'll likely roll their eyes. We're very aware and quite honestly tired of hearing about it, but I have never seen a bigger bully effect, more students, teachers, coaches, and parents than during this school year." Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction states, "Bullying is deliberate or intentional behavior using words, actions intended to cause fear, intimidation, or harm. Bullying may be a repeated behavior and involves an imbalance of power." Okay, I'm going to call this bully the expert. And like many bullies, this expert has a group of supporters that show up with him out of fear of being harassed themselves. These supporters will do whatever the bully asks of them, whether they believe it's right or not. And this is where he went into being in basketball this year. So. I'm here tonight to address, to make you aware that I'm going to stand up to this bully. Will you stand behind me and Ian and other students, teachers, coaches, and parents that want our lives back? Will you correct this deliberate, intentional behavior using words, actions intended to cause fear, intimidation, or harm? It's time for you to put an end to this repeated behavior and imbalance of power. Per your own bullying policy, will the Lake Mills School District provide a safe, secure, and respectful learning environment for all students in school buildings, on school grounds, and school buses, and at school-sponsored activities? Will you protect us from the social, physical, psychological, and academic impact of these bullies? This school district agreed to consistently and vigorously address bullying so that there is no disruption of the learning environment and learning process. And once again, to repeat my son's words, you are failing us. I know that you guys are in a tough spot. You signed up for this job, so all I can tell you is make the tough decision for the kids. You're going to get flack either way, so make the right decision for the kids, and we will have your backs. Thank you.
Adam Sigmund?
I'm Adam Sigmund, 116 East Grant Street. I'm that end of town. I come here tonight, this past year, I've been really on the fence about this whole mask issue. Being Christian, Romans 13 told me that I should submit to my government. That's changed. The mandate's been lifted. We're not required to wear them anymore, and I realize it's been left up to businesses, municipalities, that kind of thing, but I don't see the reason for it anymore. We've got four kids that are in the school system here, and I think you guys have been doing a wonderful job. Teachers, principals, everybody's been doing a great job. However. This Corona thing hits everybody differently, just in the same way the masks affect everybody differently. We have a boy that's pretty depressed. He's seeing counseling, he's on medication. We have another boy that we just recently found out is on the spectrum for autism. We got another boy that has a sensory processing disorder, and we have another boy that nothing affects him. The kid never gets sick. He don't care if you wear a mask. He just wants to go. Can you imagine though, being like a little seven, nine-year-old kid, having a sensory processing disorder, being autistic, having this thing stretched over your face, and all you want to do is just burst out of your skin and just run? Just go, go, go. It's hard enough to even get these kids to go to school. It's every struggle, my wife and I both know, every morning, it's this huge struggle just to get our two youngest off to school. If they had their way, they'd never go. They don't want to be there. This mask thing is just making it worse, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to even say what's right and what's wrong. I just know for my own selfish reasons, for my own children and my own home, this doesn't work. It just doesn't work. Three out of our four are having big-time problems with it. We got one of our oldest boy that's still in school. He struggles with fitting in. He struggles with just, even just getting through school. This past year and a half, he's gone from being on honor roll to barely passing most things. I'm not blaming it just on the mask, but this sure doesn't help. Thank you.
Nikki Engler?
Hi. Earlier, the superintendent mentioned the school liability regarding insurance, but this isn't the case. Under state law, I just wanted to name 2021, I'm sorry, 2021, Act 4, State Statute 895.476. Not what I really wanted to say. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak tonight. My name is Nikki Engler. I'm the mother of five children, ages four to 15. The speech from another parent recently really resonated with me when I was deciding what to say, so I'm going to use a lot of what he spoke. I've decided not to persuade you, board members, to do anything. I think you've all been put in an unfortunate and unfair situation. In hindsight, you and the members of the community can agree this was far more than you signed up for and greater than you are capable of managing. Instead, tonight, I'd like to do you, the board, a favor and hopefully take this burden off your shoulders and place it where it belongs, on us, the parents. Parents, I'm here tonight to try to persuade you to do something because the board has demonstrated that it is only capable of doing its outsourcing their decisions to unelected entities at the county, state, and federal levels. They have proven to be unwilling to participate in the exercise of critical or independent thinking or to demonstrate any level of intellectual integrity, curiosity, or consistency whatsoever. Or to, God forbid, entertain the idea of what may be allowing the parents of this community, the ones who elected them to the positions in the first place, and to whom they each took an oath of office to represent the dignity to make our own informed decisions about what we believe is to make our own informed decisions about what we believe is the best for the immediate and long-term mental, physical, spiritual, and emotional health of our children. So the time is now for each parent to take back the authority, which is rightly ours. You do not need to be a physician. You do not need to be an epidemiologist or a public health specialist. You do not need to have any official titles or credentials after your name. Because when it comes to your child, the only three letters that matter are M-O-D, M-O-M, and D-A-D. Those three magic letters make you the subject matter expert and the only person qualified to decide what is best for your child and your child alone. If you as a parent think the best thing at all is for your child is for their airways to be obstructed by the mask for eight hours a day, then keep sending your child to school wearing the mask. If you as a parent think that the best thing for your child is not have their mouth and nose obstructed by a bacteria-infested rag for eight hours a day, then you should not send your child to school with a mask now. Whatever you do as a parent though, do it because you truly believe it is what is best for your child. My three oldest children attended Lake Mills schools last year, but after the lack of decision-making and leadership last summer, we made the decision to homeschool. We have had many family trips, community gatherings, adventures, church life, and all without masks. We are enjoying normal life, not new normal, normal. It breaks my heart every day to see our neighbor kids waiting for the school bus with their masks on and watching children walking alone on the sidewalk after school with their masks on. I wonder how many kids would be wearing these masks voluntarily on their own if their parents had been given the option in the beginning. Maybe there are not many of you out there. Maybe I'm in the minority, but to those of you who are hearing this, you are not alone. You are not crazy. You are not heartless or careless. You are a parent and you deserve to do what you feel is right for your child. All of us do. So let's go do it.
Alicia Lux?
Good evening. My name is Alicia Lux and I live at 175 Brookstone Drive. Good evening, Dr. Olson School Board and Lake Mills residents. And for anybody who is not Lake Mills residents, thank you for coming and showing up and taking the time to be here. I'm here to speak not only as a parent, but also on behalf of a large number of concerned community members. If the school district is taking guidance from the CDC, can anyone tell me where it states that these can be used? I'm just going to hold this up here. If anybody wants to see it, hold it. This is what my son was given a couple weeks ago at school because he forgot to bring a mask. Not only does it have a light scent to it, it also appears to be a double-ply paper towel. Maybe I'm mistaken, but that's what it sure feels like. It has rubber bands attached with staples to be used for ear loops. Just wondering how many people touched this when it was being put together? And I don't believe this material can be washed. So how was this sanitized before being placed in an open bin at the school? If masks are so necessary to stop the spread of COVID, why are these being handed out to our children? How are these going to prevent the spread of COVID? We know that improper mask use can cause an increased risk of infection and that even wearing a mask is a bacterial trap. By supplying this as an alternative mask option for our children, it's pretty clear to me that the school district is ready to move forward with making masks optional. Since clearly by CDC guidelines, this is not a mask. If I would have asked each and every one of you two years ago if you would allow someone else to make decisions on your behalf regarding your child and they told you it was required for you to cover your child's face, a portion of their face, the portion of their face in which they express all of their emotions, and by covering this would in turn lead them into having a negative body images and create a place for them to be bullied, would you have said that that was okay? If not, how are you okay with this now? Who else is going to advocate for our children if we do not? Please stop quarantining our healthy children and please make masks optional for students and teachers effective immediately. Thank you.
Kevin George Giles? Sorry?
Good evening. My name is Kevin George Giles. I am here to speak in regards to wearing masks while playing sports, specifically wrestling. Before a match, it is common courtesy that we shake our opponent's hand. However, with the new COVID protocol in place, we are not allowed to do that. Most of the time while wrestling, if I had my opponent pinned or vice versa, our masks were slipping off or completely falling off at some points which forced us to constantly be touching our faces with our hands. I believe that when we are constantly adjusting our masks, that is spreading more germs and bacteria than if we were not wearing masks at all. After a match, it is common courtesy to shake our opponent's hand. However, with the COVID protocol in place, we are not allowed to do that either. How does that make sense? We just had constant bodily contact with our other person and then we aren't allowed to shake hands. By the end of the session, or by the end of the season, a lot of teams, a lot of teammates were out because they had to quarantine. If masks work, why did they have to quarantine? Why are healthy students being quarantined? Not only was I forced to quarantine when I was healthy during wrestling season, but all my teammates were too. Why did I have to quarantine when I was healthy? Why was I quarantined if I had my mask on when required? Thank you very much.
Nick Radell?
Good evening, school board members. My name is Nick Radell and I was born and raised here in Lake Mills. My wife and I have four kids, three of which are currently in the Lake Mills School District with the fourth one starting in the fall. When I was in school here at Lake Mills, I was the captain of the soccer team, basketball team, and track team. I earned all-conference in all three sports. I currently still hold school records that are up in the gymnasium. But what I remember most about being in school here in Lake Mills was being diagnosed with depression as a teenager. I didn't fit the mold for a kid with depression. As you can see, mental health issues come in all shapes and sizes. When this pandemic rolled around a year ago, I noticed that my chemical balance was off again. I understood this because I've had treatment before when I was a teenager. So I reached out to my doctor and under her guidance, she had me see a specialist. After seeing a specialist, I was then diagnosed with anxiety, depression, and ADHD. My mind was absolutely blown. At 38 years old, I find out I had a learning disability that no one knew about before. I had a million questions and I researched as many as I could on my own time. One out of every 10 people have ADHD, according to the CDC. Six in 10 children with ADHD had at least one other mental, emotional, or behavioral disorder with the most common being depression and anxiety. During the COVID pandemic, 40% of people reported at least one adverse mental or behavioral health condition, according to the CDC website. This is only for those of us that are diagnosed. How many students do you really think are in our schools right now that aren't diagnosed? ADHD is hereditary, so for me, there's a very good chance that one of my kids has it. Excuse me. ADHD brains have trouble regulating emotions. So mood swings are very common and don't usually equal the situation. Our brains are hard-wired to feel safe, knowing we can turn to others if we need to. So whenever we feel lonely, the fight-or-flight area in our brain releases stress hormones into our nervous system. If we stay in that state of alert for a long time, like wearing a mask all day in school, it starts to have a physical effect on our body, like our digestive system or immune system. How many of our children or students do you think have a mental health issue going on and are afraid to talk about it or just plain hide it? I was able to hide mine and I never had to wear a mask. Due to COVID, we have a massive reduction in face-to-face interactions. For someone with anxiety and depression, this is catastrophic. The saying "A smile is contagious" comes into play here. ADHD brains have a lower level of dopamine, which regulates the brain's reward system. So when a normal person hears a teacher say to them, "Good job," under a mask, their dopamine is released and they feel really good about what they just heard. When an ADHD brain hears a masked teacher say, "Good job," and doesn't see a smiling teacher, we don't get that dopamine release and start second-guessing, "What did we do wrong?" That's when the anxiety and depression really sink their teeth in. Suicide rate has also increased across the board during COVID. Economic stress is associated with higher suicide rates, according to the CDC. Social isolation, like a kid quarantined that is completely healthy, is also associated with increased suicidal thoughts. I personally lost a family member during this time to suicide. He was very young. This isn't an issue to just sweep under the rug. Let's address this now. It's not something to look at four weeks from now when school's all done. Will you act today to give these students a choice that they deserve to make their mental health?
Amanda Lada?
Hello. My husband and I were born and raised here. We graduated here and now we have three kids coming up into the school district, eighth grade, third grade, kindergarten, and a 4K are coming up. We were proud to say that we were born and raised here because of the leaders that we have in this town. Sadly though, our opinion has changed on the leadership because it's illegal right now of what you guys are still mandating. I'm here tonight though to ask that our schools think about what we can do to make them safer without the masks. Can we get... Sorry. Could we get classroom air purifiers? Just like when you go to the dentist or the doctor's offices, they have really good air purifiers. We know the school had been given a generous government stimulus through all the funding. Where is that money going? How much did you guys make off of each child enrolled? We will do whatever we can to support the teachers and the staff of the school. We're here to work with them, not against them. With that, load the hand sanitizer. Get those plexiglasses. Whatever you need to do so we can teach our kids that we need to see their faces. We need to see the faces of the teachers. You know as much as I do, our kids are beautiful, stunning kids, learn through emotion. How do you expect our kids to learn through emotion through masks? How can they correct themselves through a mask? We all need to see emotion and we need to learn how to correct it yesterday, today, and tomorrow. We want to see their beautiful, beaming smiles. Like everyone else, we want to work with you guys. The vaccines are out there. Everything's out there. But to see the emotional and mental health of them deplete, it's just beyond sad. I love my kids more than anybody here. But for their well-being, masks should no longer stand. Our family has taken time to research proper masks, which there is none. We have done everything to research proper hygiene and how many times you should hand wash and we've, everything possible. We take the best vitamins at the Lake Mills chiropractor. Like we do it all. But to wear a mask eight hours a day, I feel like a hypocrite because I don't have to wear one. I have a very logical, smart boss. Please make masks optional effective immediately. We are all raising leaders. Let's keep up the great work. Let's not fail them. Let's go into a session immediately tonight. Make masks optional. God bless.
Melanie Fritz?
Hi, my name is Melanie Fritz. I actually live at N 4235 Alpine Village Lane in Cambridge. But I do have a student, actually two I had this year in Lake Mills. Never done anything like this before, but here I am, telling you a story. When this all first came out and the CDC mandated masks, the first thing we chose to do was to buy a pulse oximeter. And I'm sure Tanya knows what those are. But they put them on your finger at the ER when you first come in and they check your blood oxygen saturation. I had a 10-year-old, a 14-year-old, and a 65 woman. My 10-year-old and my 14-year-old, within 15 minutes, all registered below 90. And as many of you know, 89% is considered... They put a mask on you or they supplement oxygen in the ER. I can't even imagine how many kids are coming in with headaches. Even just me standing here, I'm so nervous, I feel like I'm going to need oxygen. But I can't even imagine how many kids are being skirted that are coming to the office with headaches or symptoms of hypoxia. Like I said, anywhere between 89% and 80... Sorry, my youngest... Holy crap, this is harder than I thought it was going to be. The other part I wanted to touch base on was that I do have, one of my kids has had a lot of emotional stuff since this all started. And we... Oh, this is so hard. I can't even believe, I don't know that I'm going to do this again. We've never before had any issues with emotional health with our young one and we ended up in counseling. The school has notified us twice already this year that he has searched things like how to commit suicide on the computer. And never before have we had issues like this. He misses his friends. Outside of this, we have led relatively normal lives and stayed very healthy. But we are doing virtual because I just am not comfortable putting the kids into this situation right now. I just urge, I hope that you will consider making the masks mandatory. Excuse me? Holy hell, I can't believe I just said that. Making the masks optional. And I thank you very much.
Alright, last but not least, Sylvia Springer?
Good evening and thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. I'm Sylvia Springer and I live at 204 Crestview Lane. I have a PhD in microbiology and immunology and I'm currently an assistant professor at Concordia University, Wisconsin. And I am speaking tonight on some people that may not have the courage to speak. As you know, on March 31st, 2021, the Supreme Court of Wisconsin ruled Governor Evers violated the law by issuing multiple consecutive emergency declarations in response to COVID-19, including mask mandates, and are therefore null and void. In accordance with the federal law Title 21 U.S.C. 360BBB-3, all tests, masks not used as PPE in surgery or clinical settings, and vaccines are optional. Based on the American Academy at Pediatrics dataset ranging from April 2020 to March 2021, the number of COVID-19 positive cases in children from Wisconsin ages 0 to 19 was 3%. Statistically, this value is very low since it covers the age range 0 to 19. My husband and I have 10-plus years of scientific academic studies earned at prestigious universities. We currently have several publications in both microbiology, immunology, and pharmacology. As a legal guardian to my son, who is five years old and lives in Lake Mills, I along with his father have legal authority over his health, which includes masking, vaccinations, and other health needs. Please be advised that when my son returns for in-person instruction in the fall of 2021, he will not be wearing a mask. Thank you and I appreciate your time.
So that concludes the public comment period. We move into the consent agenda. That agenda includes the approval of the April 12 regular meeting minutes, the April 12 Finance Committee proceedings, the April 26 Special Meeting Minutes, approval of vouchers and invoices, approval of the Treasurers Report, approval of Personnel Report, approval of the 2021 Summer School Staff, approval of a number of policies, which is the second reading of those policies, approval of membership in WIAA for the 21-22 school year. And at this point, are there any of those items that board members would wish to discuss separately? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. It's open for discussion or questions. Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Moving on to action items. The first item is the approval of student dues and fees for the 2021 school year. Their changes to these fees were discussed during the Finance Committee meeting. I would entertain a motion for the approval of those fees.
I'll move the board approve the student dues and fees for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. It's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, we have a roll call vote, please.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Next is the approval of the CISA II contracts for the upcoming year. We, over the years, contract with CISA II to provide programs and services that we do not provide ourselves. So I would ask for a motion for that approval.
I move the board to approve the CISA II contracts for the 2021-22 school year as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, questions? May we please have a roll call vote?
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the professional staff teaching contracts for the 2021-22 school year.
I move the board approve the professional staff teaching contracts for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of middle school administrative contract for the 2122 school year. It's my understanding that this basically changes the length of that contract.
Correct.
So I'd entertain a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the administrative contract for Mr. Nathan Grendal as Middle School Assistant Principal and Technology Integration for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next is approval of a high school administrative contract for the 2122 school year. And again, this is length of the contract change. Entertain a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the administrative contract to Mr. Stefan Koncedin as High School Assistant Principal and Director of Athletics for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of Fort Healthcare School Nursing Services contract. The district contracts for the school nurse through Fort Healthcare. This is basically a renewal of a contract that we have had for a number of years. So I'd entertain a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the contract for school nursing services with Fort Healthcare for the 2021-2022 school year.
Moved and seconded. Comments or questions? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is one that was discussed during the Finance Committee meeting for paving work at the elementary school. Entertain a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the bid from Pavlaki Paving Corporation for $32,860.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, questions? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is the approval of a bid for roofing work at the high school. This was, again, discussed in the Finance Committee and I'd entertain a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the bid for Badgerland Commotion Commercial Roofing for $25,990.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of gifts. Again, we are very grateful for a very supportive community and I would entertain a motion to accept the gifts and to thank the generous donors.
I... Oh, go ahead, Ken.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thanks the generous donors for the continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills area school district. A $100 donation of golf balls to the high school golf team from Kenneth Deans, Lake Mills alumni class of 1947. A $100 donation to the Lake Mills High School FFA from Helenville Mutual Insurance in memory of Earl Topol. A $400 donation to the Lake Mills Recreation Department from Outdoor Heritage Education Center. A $1,000 donation to the Lake Mills High School FFA from Carmen Alexander. And a $1,538.87 donation to the high school soccer department from Ginger Hartman.
Second.
Moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio?
Aye. Motion carries. And again, we're very thankful for the generosity. The next is future agenda items.
Yes, we discussed a few minor changes to the employee handbook. We will be looking at revisions to the pandemic plan. And then we also are looking at approval of the high school handbook, hopefully getting some preliminary budget put together. It's been more difficult in this year. And then the Crossroad Two programming, which is a 6603 agreement, among other things. Actually, I'm going to make one other note I don't have on here. We will be hearing from Victoria Pratt, who runs Thrive. We will be looking at a pilot with the high school as far as youth apprenticeship and school-to-work business partnerships. So she will be here at the board meeting to do a presentation on that.
Thank you. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The meeting is over.